Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the City Council meeting and I'll call the meeting to order. If they all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if you're there with us here today, if you can help us with the rule call, please.
Sure. Alderperson Henry?
Here.
Barron?
Here.
Valdi?
Here.
Dean?
Here.
Grimmer?
Here.
Kassen?
Here.
Ayker?
Here.
Mayor Atwell?
Present.
Administrator Hafner?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to number four, approval of the minutes of September 20th.
Move to approve of the minutes.
A second.
Danielle seconds. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Okay, we'll move on to number five, City of Delafield citizens comments. Come on up, sir.
Well, thank you. Hi, my name is Bob Transon. I live at 30, after talking this, I live at 3018 Naguica Avenue, Delafield. And I come here to ask for a favor. I commend you for being here because I was an alderman for six years. I served on the fire department for 12. I was on a planning commission for 14. I was on a library board for about 14.
Wow.
Plus Delhard Sewer Committee. Anyway, that's not why I'm here, all right? I'm here as a Lion member, all right? And as you know the city, the Lion has contributed some things to the city, like the pavilion by the ballpark on Main Street. They helped with raising money for the statues at the police and fire building. They've also contributed to the library. They pay for programs and they've also contributed equipment, okay? So, but I'm here as that Lion member and I want to ask a favor. I'm also, I go to Mexico every year for the last 15 years for eyeglass recycling. And what we've done in Delafield for recycling, we've always had these little boxes. And what I like to do is what I propose to do, if you guys can help us, help the Lions with this, is to have something like this. I have to get up?
Yep. Pass it around?
Pass it around.
Handouts.
Okay. I don't know if I have enough, but you can share. Let's share.
We can share. You can just pass them down.
Just pass them down.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not exactly looking for something like that, but I saw that mailbox in Middleton by the senior citizen center. And what I was looking for is something like that, but we can get a mailbox. It doesn't have to be that color, but as long as the Lion's logo is on it. And we would like that to be placed somewhere by the library because we figured that would be the most effective place to get glasses. As, as I sit on, as I am a Lions that goes to Mexico every year, we deal with 80,000 pairs of glasses we send down there. And we see, in a two-week time period, we see anywhere between 10,000 and 12,000 people in two weeks, okay? The reason that we want to recycle glasses is because the United States doesn't allow recycled glasses to be given within the United States. Bless you. So, we have to, so when we go to Mexico, 80% of the people in Mexico do not have access to eyeglasses. 20% do. And it's opposite in the United States. And so what we're trying to do is be able to collect the glasses and be able to be more efficient. And we figured that a placement in the library would be, near the library would be the best place for it, okay? We certainly would like to give you some prototypes of things that we could provide you with as far as logo or mailbox, you know, something that would be suitable to the City of Delafield, okay? One more picture. All right. This is the reason why we go. This lady is 64 years old, highly my optic person. She hasn't seen anything in front of her face. The only thing she sees is stuff in front of her face. Thank you. The only thing she sees is stuff in front of her face, all right? And so, she is like 64 years old, so she's never seen anything, all right? So, we found a pair of glasses for her with the guidance of an optometrist that we bring down with us. And her glasses, we found a pair for 20, minus 20, minus 20, which is like Coke bottle glasses, okay? We put the glasses on her and she had to take them off. You couldn't, it was hurting her. And so, we worked for like maybe 15 minutes putting the glasses on, taking the glasses off, getting her eyes used to it because the eye has six muscles to it. And so, we're stretching those muscles out, which has never been stretched out before. So, after 15 minutes of working with her, she had the smile on her face and the first thing she saw with me, I was so happy. So, that's my request for you guys to consider that.
When you look at, I just have a couple, I know we're not supposed to talk, but I have just a quick question. I mean, that was a, like, looked like an old post office box, but are there some things that, do you want it that big? And do you have some ideas of where we might find stuff like that?
We can find a post office box and we can color it or paint it any way that you see fit, okay?
All right. Okay, thank you.
So, we can get those.
Okay.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that work.
You're welcome. You can keep the pictures. Thanks.
Okay, are there any other citizens comments, Mary? Come on up.
My name is Mary Daniel. I live at 309 Wisconsin Avenue here in beautiful Delafield. This evening I'd like to talk about, on the agenda, number six, the consent agenda, A. That is, let me put my glasses on. Resolution 2021-17, a resolution to set the 2022 impact fees for the schedule for the City of Delafield. After reading many pages, specifically the property and open and statement of values, which involves the municipal property insurance company, I called and reached out to Molly Schneider for help as to where this would fall on the agenda this evening. And then to Amy, our treasurer, for more help, which, thank you to both of them. My concerns were forwarded to Tom mid-afternoon today. This agenda, this evening, is 83 pages, which was posted Friday, October 1st at 2:00 p.m. and it's a lot to read, to say the least. So, my concerns are with number 14, Legion Park, which has a value of a little over $11,000 for bleachers, doggy stations, garbage containers, five metal picnic tables, wood picnic tables, et cetera, et cetera. My understanding is that the City of Delafield had a 20-year lease with the Legion for using the baseball field. And that lease was not renewed. So, the bleachers, tables, et cetera, which have a value of almost just over $11,000, were, I'm going to use in quotes, "given" to the Legion. So, should the value of this still be on our insurance policy? And I would guess the Legion Park is no longer a Delafield park. Further down, under number 22, under lift stations, number 18, which is located at 4,800 Village Court in Delafield, which is on the north side of Delafield, they're the Parlequins Village Apartments. It lists things of value for $314,000, some of which are fire hydrants for 271, the statue of the three children in a log for 20, statue of the boy and the girl reading for 16, and the statue of the boy fishing. The statue of the boy and girl reading are right out here in the front of City Hall. And the other two statues have been stored in the upper level of the DPW since they've been donated many years ago. So, are there really fire hydrants at lift station number 18? Another question I had was number eight, Dobkins Street Parking Lot. Where is this? To the best of my memory, part of Dobkins Street was closed when the apartments on Wells Street were built. And the other small section of Dobkins has no parking lot, but it has, it's, has a doggy station, garbage containers, and recycling for about $1,300. So, I have some questions and I think Tom's going to be able to help me with them. But there's good news. People ask at the Delafield History Center at Hawks Inn when a building was built. So, one of these reports under statement of values has the year built. So, now we can begin to answer those questions. Some of them might need a little tweaking because they're newer buildings. And I personally learned that Delafield has 22 lift stations in our sewer system. So, that's all I have to say tonight. So, thank you, everybody.
Great. Thank you for sharing your comments.
Thank you, Mary.
All right, seeing no further citizens here, citizens' comments are now closed. And we'll move on to number six, consent agenda.
Wow, so move.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Abstentions? Passes. Okay. Moving on to number seven, boards committees, commission reports. Anything for licenses? Okay. We'll move on to planning commission. Right, Kurt?
All right, we did have a meeting last week. Few topics of interest. One, again, I brought up last time, the boathouse, successful business up on Highway 16 near Parlequins Village on Highway 16, northwest corner of the city, provided a business plan of operation and site plan and that as a concept. And they're coming back to us with their final plans and that in our next meeting, I believe. And also, something discussed was, and the applicant wasn't there, but there was plenty of questions. The Kowalski Kitchen Furnishers, a remodeling company right here in the corner, what is that, Milwaukee Street and Genesee is proposing a remodel for the, to the facade of the building. And lots of questions about how it's going to look and how it's going to fit in. So, we're looking forward to that. Look at the minutes or the packet for the next plan commission meeting because I suspect they'll be there at our next meeting to talk about that. And we did advance the effort to look into changing the tree preservation ordinance, raising the fee for tree caliper wrenches to, from 150 to 250. So, we're, that was unanimous and it's coming, we're waiting for that to come back from the city planner and attorney for a resolution or an update to the zoning that'll end up coming back to here as well, as well as a public hearing. And same goes for possible changes and clarifications to how we approve community-based residential facilities in residential areas based on the number of beds and what types of things we're looking for. So, that's also something that's, that we're working on. And aside from that, there was not much else. So, look for our next meeting posting later this month if you're interested in what's going on. And that would be it.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go on to Lake Welfare Committee, which I believe there was no meeting.
Correct.
And then we'll move on to Park and Rec, Tree Board.
Park and Rec, they had a meeting last week, I believe. Couple of the highlights, one was the establishment of a volunteer group headed by our own Mary Daniel to, to continue to the maintenance of the Bark River Restoration Project now that our contract is trailing off with the maintenance along the edge, so weeding and whatnot. Mary's group will meet several times over the summer to clean up. She's been trained by the existing contractor into how to go about it in a way that preserves that riverbank. And we'll report back to Park and Rec preseason, postseason, and as needed in between. So, we thank her very much for volunteering to do that and organizing that effort. That's about it. Another report.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to E, Public Works Committee. Committee reported by Mr. Barron.
So, in your packet, if you go to page sheet number 49, there's a map. Looks something like this. And so, on Wednesday night, there's a meeting at 6:30 of the Public Works Committee and it's basically a meeting to just discuss and have, take public input on, on the proposed trail map and the document that's attached to it. There's a page on there that shows all the trails going out probably 10 to 20 years before we get to some of these. Some are going to be, will, will fall into developers laps. Some will be public works projects over the years. So, there's been a lot of time spent on this, particularly by our committee chairman who seems, who has kind of volunteered to staff this thing for the last year. The highlights, I would say, is first of all, we adopted Park and Rec's plan in its entirety with a notation that a lot of the trails that are kind of squiggly and purple through vacant lands are there just to indicate a trail will go through there. It's not an exact location. So, when a developer comes along, they can pick it up and work it into their development. So, that's probably the most sketchy on the thing. The more significant ones follow the roads we all know about, Highway C, Naguica Road, Milwaukee Street, Main Street, some of those roads. We also identified some areas near downtown where we think for very little money, we can improve the existing network of sidewalks. And so, you'll see things like on Poplar Path, there's a little, little nip to the Lake Country Trail off, out of that Lappam Peak subdivision, Lappam, I think it's Lappam Road, I can't recall. We certainly endorse using Naguaki Park, which has a lot of existing facilities. There's some streets that I'm talking about going up north towards Naguica Road with some connection over some vacant land that is still there. It's interesting because I was here for the plan commission presentation a week ago and I was talking to somebody that knows something about some of those lands and I looked something up and in 1974, Dot White was the mayor and there's a certified survey map that was filed. And on there, there's a 10-foot reservation for a trail, bike trail, right where we were drawing it.
Oh, that's pretty cool.
I mean, and so, it's just, people have been thinking about this a long time and I, I have not heard a lot about trails until maybe 15 years ago. So, I think it's interesting that almost 50 years ago, someone put it on the map. And I guess that's the tone of this, that there's probably lines on this map that won't be built for 50 years. But I think in 20 to 30 years, a lot of this will be done.
And I'm thrilled to see it and commend everybody because it's exactly what folks have been asking for, is sort of a combination of Parks and Rec's insights into what is needed and then Public Works, sort of more of the nuts and bolts. The, you know, it's just a smart way, I think, to approach it.
Well, we're trying to, and there are people that are still concerned about trails in front of their houses. But we're trying to show a bigger picture that it's part of a bigger system and we're trying to be fair about it. We're not just picking on one, one neighborhood or whatever, so.
So, I have a question. On the south end of the lake, you have the Milwaukee Street in yellow, but there's also then the rails to trails that a lot of people use, the multimodal. Is there a reason we have two there?
Well, because Milwaukee Street is on, it's still considered an opportunity for a path at some point.
Right. Yeah. I'm just thinking that it's a very narrow street and there's a bike trail two blocks away, so. That would be my question, like practically, does it make sense?
That's a more difficult one to build. And I will say, on our list, I don't know where that is, but it's down the list. And our, our goal is to, is to wisely spend money. And so, you're going to see some smaller, cheaper fixes within five years, along with always picking something on a major street. And so, it's, it, what I like about it is now it's become kind of the work of the Park and Rec, or rather, the Public Works Committee as it was assigned. And, and it should carry over as we have to turn over. And there's no reason we can't amend this in the future, but if, if this is passed, it's going to come forward to us, just like the Park and Rec Plan. It will be adopted and put into the master plan. So, I'm highlighting it. If people are interested to come, either for or against, but please come and talk to us.
Don't you think this is the time people should come?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Get there now and not wait until, but you never told me.
Well, and so, we've encouraged, that's why it's highlighted on this agenda. That's why I'm taking the time to talk about it. It's two days from today. There really was no other work on that meeting. So, that's.
Great. Thank you very much, Jim. Okay, we'll move down to Delhard. Right, Kurt, did you have a meeting?
Let me think. Yes, we did. And we have, we're looking, we're investigating a, we've got increased phosphorus limits coming up, two years out, that are, will involve a rather substantial investment annually for chemicals to be applied, despite some of the upgrades we've done recently with the infrared, I mean, the ultraviolet. So, we just, we agreed to get three proposals from contractors to help us with using some biology instead of just chemistry. So, we're going to try to avert spending on chemicals and have our own little nature experiment take care of the phosphorus with the holding tanks and stuff that we have. So, it's nothing, nothing crazy innovative. It's just going to take some design work and we're going to end up with some bids coming in over the next six months to act on so we can avoid, like I said, a chemical budget when we can just use infrastructure and methods to do the same thing. And that would be it. And get our regular meeting in another eight weeks, so.
Sounds good.
Excuse me, Tim, could you elaborate on the two-year thing? You said there's, in two years.
Well, yeah, our, our, our state legislature and governor signed us, signed Wisconsin up for extremely aggressive phosphorus limit for, because we're a point source, as are any water treatment facilities are. But, so our current facility won't meet those goals unless we make a change. One change we can do is procedurally by using a combination of different chemicals, which will be about a budget item of about somewhere between a quarter million and $350,000 a year. And there's a way to not do that, which involves more time and just process with the biology. Our plant manager calls them bugs, right? So, they, one organism eats another organism and we get the same result. So, it's just a matter of, we need, we needed some infrastructure changes. I think it's fall of 2023 is when we need to have this in place by. So, we're getting bids to have that expense off at the pass and spend money on about $2 million or $2.5 million in infrastructure instead of 300 grand a year forever.
Yeah, definitely. Do you happen to know, or Tom, or anybody else happen to know what might be the next sewage treatment plant upstream from the lake?
What? Up the Bark River from us? Boy, I don't know.
Just kind of.
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can find out.
I don't know. But we know what, we know very precisely what comes in and what goes out. I mean, we have a chemist and a.
It sounds like you guys are on it, too.
And yeah, once it, once it hits Illinois, though, all bets are off. They do what they want. So, anyway, that's it for Delhard.
Thank you.
Just thought, take a shot at our neighbors.
Well, dear.
All righty, sounds good. No police commission, correct?
None.
Okay, library board, Jackie.
We did not meet since our last common council meeting, but the library board meets October 12th, a week from tomorrow, 6:30, right here.
Okay, thank you much. Okay, thank you much. I don't believe there's any zoning board of appeals. Jim, promotion of tourism.
Well, the minutes are, the draft minutes are attached. And I guess, basically, good news. It seems that the revenues are coming back, so much so that we had a proposed budget of $150,000 for next year, but we actually approved $167,000, only because there are some, some marketing opportunities that we wish to take advantage of. And it looks like the revenue is there to cover it. So that's basically the gist of it.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board.
The board met in late September. We adjusted our operating budget, 2022 budget, to reflect the increase in health insurance premiums from 4% to 7% actual. And then we have debated the allocation of the fund balance between the three original communities, Neshota, Sheneka, and Delafield. And that debate continues with an investigation on how to distribute those funds because it's potentially prohibited under the intermunicipal agreement. So we're getting a legal opinion on that.
All right. Sounds good. Okay, number eight, unfinished business. Discussion and possible action regarding ordinance number 782, an ordinance to create Section 2-100, Section 2-191, D of the City of Delafield Municipal Code regarding the conduct of remote attendance at meetings of the common council and city boards, commissions, and committees. I think that's you, Tom.
Yeah, this is something we've talked about the last two council meetings regarding the virtual meetings or remote attendance. It was brought before you as a draft at the last meeting. And the only comment we talked about was to change the deadlines for notification to be with respect to the deadline for noticing the meeting as opposed to the meeting itself. So the way it's written now, if someone wants to participate remotely, they would need to contact the city clerk within 48 hours of the deadline to publish, publish the or notice the meeting. And then the clerk would pass it on to the chairperson of the meeting. And that person would have to make a decision within 24 hours of the notice to of the meeting. Any questions on that?
Well, this is for people who are just wanting to attend it. It isn't in case of, you know, like an emergency or something, you know, then you just wouldn't be in attendance, right?
So this does cover emergencies, and it does say that we can, the chairperson or of the committee could, could allow people, including all members, to participate virtually remotely.
I'm thinking a blizzard or something, you know, like where we just can't get here. It would make sense to still function. You know, it ends snow days. And as a teacher, that really sucks. But, you know, I mean, we could all meet as a common council, even if there were 18 inches of snow dropping.
So the way this is written, you know, if the meeting notice would go out on Friday, and we, the weather report over the weekend starts showing a massive blizzard on Monday, and it, and it hits, this would not allow us to, to all of a sudden change direction and hold that meeting virtually. It wouldn't be, we'd be beyond the window to make that decision.
Right. And does that make sense? I mean, unlikely it's going to happen, but just a question.
In the, in the pre-COVID days, we just canceled the meeting and rescheduled it if needed.
Well, that's what you still would do.
Yeah. Well, I think Jackie's trying to figure out if there's a way that we could hold that meeting virtually.
Right. You know, it's no longer necessary to have a snow day for a school district because we have all the technology. We just switch online.
But we're saying we're giving people a proper public notice of a meeting. And we have to live with that, I think. And that was what we asked for, is that we want something they can rely upon. So either.
That works, yeah.
Either it's virtual or not with notice. And if we have to cancel, just like we had to cancel any other meeting, we can't adopt a virtual mode at the last minute.
Right. Yeah. And I think you're, I get, I get what you're saying, the whole idea of how you have to have a certain amount of notice.
Right.
Right. Gotcha.
And it would be consistent with the Department of Justice opinions to not call for a virtual meeting that late in the process after notice had gone out?
Yeah, it also, it also accommodates a situation where one or multiple members might be subject to the same type of odd situation like the, like COVID, or something's on the agenda, and they happen to have their particular committee has two or three situations with family issues where people are traveling, and just trying to make an accommodation as reasonable to keep the meeting in place based on that situation. And I mean, yeah, so.
And what you're saying is if somebody had to travel, it's either family, you know, just so that they could in fact then attend the meeting virtually, is that what we're saying, with, you know, people would have notice.
You need to have the right notice. So.
Yeah, if you have the right notice.
Yeah. So if there's, who knows what those would be. So like, like the, like the COVID is a perfect example, and that's kind of, I'm sure that's why this came on. But that combined with other things, you suffer for a lack of a quorum, and you've got some significant order of business that otherwise would be really punitive for either an applicant or harmful to the city's budget or whatever else to prolong it. I think it makes sense to keep it in place.
Right. It's not optimal, but it's, yeah, for sure.
And I think, I like, whatever, it's not, it's not too to allow someone to be persistently absentee just because they don't like driving to be here in person. So it gives some discretion, right, to the council, to the committee chairperson. So I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 782 as presented.
I'll second it.
All right. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Great. Okay, next is Mayor, woo.
Mary's being too still.
There you go.
Our lights went off in the back. Couldn't see it on TV, though. Okay, Mayor's Report. No Mayor's Report today. So we'll move on to 10A, Discussion to Create an Ordinance to Amend Section 2-194 in the City of Delafield Municipal Code and Update the Order of Business for Common Council Meetings. Tom?
Yeah, let me get to this. This is an item that Molly had on the agenda, and it really revolves around, currently, the municipal code defines our order of business for our common council meeting. And she noted that the Dear Management Committee is not included on the list of committees. And so she thought that that's something that needs to be addressed. And she put together a memo and is looking for feedback from you on options for addressing that, you know, ranging from just simply adding Dear Management Committee somewhere in that list, to maybe taking all the committees out of the list and just indicate that where committee reports fall on the agenda and not have to worry about making sure that we've got each and every committee listed in the ordinance. Another one she mentioned would be to leave the existing committees in the ordinance, and then just add another category for other committees.
Although the list on the agenda also holds, if I'm mistaken, links if they're posted?
Say it again.
Don't fill it on the agenda. Can't you link to the agenda or the minutes from other meetings? Wouldn't that then eliminate that?
Yeah. So under the heading of other committees, then under that, it would list the other committees that are going to be on the agenda. It's just, I think, from Molly's perspective, it's a way to, every time we have an additional short-term committee or something, to not have to be concerned about making sure we codify it into the ordinance.
I think the other committees is a good idea.
Yeah, we've got.
Because you've got this development committee now. Now, that will be done, but.
Any thought of adding Dear Management Committee, as long as we're talking about it now, and then adding a other committees category?
Sounds appropriate to me.
It's a standing committee. I guess you could add it, yeah.
But it's a committee with a sunset clause, right?
I would have to review the ordinance, but it sounds like you know that for sure.
Yes.
Okay.
So it's got a sunset clause for like two more years.
Was it a date specific, the sunset clause?
Can't answer that specific question, but it did have an expiration, let's put it that way. So I think it should just fall under other committees.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Because we're going to have that whole deer thing figured out 18 months.
I don't think so.
No, the other committees is, I think, I like the all-encompassing thing because they are, they're, they're seasonal. I mean.
It is seasonal, for sure.
Points of interest, for sure, yeah.
Okay. And I'll bring that feedback back to Molly, and she'll come back with an ordinance at the next meeting for your consideration.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sounds good. Okay, on to 10B, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Resolution Number 2021-16, Resolution Authorizing an Adjustment to the Municipal Levy Limit for Increases in Charges Associated with Lake Country Fire and Rescue. Tom?
Yeah. So this is a similar ordinance to what we passed back in 2014. It just simply states that the City of Delafield has the option of using the tool of the Joint Fire Department credit to our municipal levy limit. And in order for any one of the municipalities in a joint fire department to be able to use this credit, all of them need to adopt such an ordinance. So this is something that's, a couple of the municipalities have already adopted, the rest are going to be adopting here within the next week or two. And the only change whatsoever with this, that from what we've passed in the past, is that it used to be based on the Consumer Price Index at the end of September. And since then, the law has changed to the end of August, just to give municipalities a little bit more time to have that number in place and to know what their budget situation is. So that's the only change from current practice.
I'll move to approve Resolution 2021-16.
I'll second. So a quick question. Why in the world would you not exercise your ability to use this? Like, why would, is, why would one of the, one of our partners in Lake Country Fire and Rescue elect not to leverage the credit opportunity?
Several, a couple do.
Is, is there?
It would be a municipality that.
Has more.
Wants no budget flexibility and wants to keep taxes as absolutely positively low as they possibly, possibly could be regardless of what it does to operations.
And that's, has that happened? Where some of our, any one of the, our other members has not exercised the?
So when I talk to the administrators, they all seem to indicate that they thought it was likely to pass at all the communities. Matt's looking at me like he knows something different.
I, that's not what I, I, the resolution will pass, yes. I, but I, but I know that some communities are indifferent to it.
But so, but it's not one, it's not one tie, all tie. Like, if one person doesn't exercise the right to use the credit.
No.
We don't lose our right to it.
No.
Matt, are you mixing up the ability to use some of the credit versus maximizing the credit? Is that what you're?
Maybe that, maybe, maybe so. I don't know that that's a difference, a difference without a distinction, without a difference.
So, so right now, this Joint Fire Department credit says that if the fire department budget increases by no more than CPI plus 2%, which is 5% this year, CPI was 3%. So if it, if it increases by no more than that, then the total increase, you can add that on to your levy limit, and it, and there's no impact. If you're a penny over CPI plus 2%, you don't get any adjustment to your levy limit. And I know that there's some municipal concern that Lake Country Fire and Rescue was looking to budget all the way up to CPI plus 2% as opposed to maybe CPI plus, you know, instead of 5%, maybe 3.5% or 4% or maybe that, maybe they thought a different number was more appropriate. Is that fair to say, Matt?
It is, absolutely.
All right. Sounds good to me.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Okay, we'll move on to 10C, Discussion Regarding the Approaching Retirement of City Attorney Jim Hamis and the Process to Appoint and Confirm the Next City Attorney. Tom again?
Yeah, we did get, Jim sat down with Kent and I and told us that he's going to be retiring. He says it's likely going to be somewhere around the end of the year, but he's flexible based on our needs. And so just wanted to bring that to your attention first and foremost. We certainly appreciate the years of service that Jim has provided to us. But now we need to look towards finding ourselves a new city attorney. So that position is one that is appointed by the mayor with confirmation by the common council. And in talking it through with Kent, what we do intend on is going through an RFP process and identifying various municipal attorneys and firms that are appropriate for our needs, and then going through that type of process.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
All right. We'll move on to 10D, Approval of Vouchers Payables Report. The reporting dates are 9/21/21, 10/4/21, and the amount of $107,785.29 for accounts payables and $71,387.36 for payroll.
I move to approve the voucher list.
Second.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. All right. Item number 11, Report of City Officials. City Administrator up again.
I have no report this evening.
There we go. City Clerk?
Molly. Molly included some information on the local redistricting, just for your information at this time. She does plan to bring back additional information to you by the end of this week.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Number C, City Treasurer. August 2021 Treasurer's Report. That's in the packet. And then D, Council Request for Future Agenda Items.
I have a short one. It's not a, just maybe necessarily a discussion action, but just wondering about actions I've seen along the, it's the Lake Country Trail, but also I've seen along Bleecker Street, just south of Milwaukee and north of Maine. It looks like just clear cutting. And I'm just wondering what's, why? It looks like, I mean, what I've seen is just a big thing that's just coming along, cutting down all vegetative matter. And it's, I have a minute and a half video from the trail, but there's a short swatch. I've just noticed it here and there. And I'm just wondering what's going on. So if we can get a little report on that.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Sounds good. All righty.
Would anybody like the Lions request on the next agenda?
Sure.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. We'll go on to number 12. Seeing no further business, the meeting is now adjourned at 7:43.
Thank you.
Jackie, do you think there could just be?
We Energies, it's a, it's a lot.
That's what it is.
What is it?
We Energies.